I've already made a mistake. I forgot. Call the meeting in order and to the. I will announce that residents will have three minutes to speak. Your comments will be recorded auditorily and visually. A roll call, please.
Ms. Book, I'm here. Mrs. DePew?
Here.
Mr. Lahr?
Here.
Mr. McCowen?
Yes.
Mr. Nagy?
Here.
Mr. Sobrowski?
Here.
Mr. Bee?
Here.
And Mayor Noah?
Here.
Mr. Furman? And Mr. Rasmichael?
Here.
One present.
Okay, thank you. And I'd now like to move to the recognition of our Christmas card winners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. DePew. Appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm so honored. I'm going to introduce three students. They're fourth grade students here, two of which attend Harrison and one of which attends Mother of Mercy Academy. They put in a lot of hard work where they drew a picture, a holiday picture, and the best pictures were taken and we were making the holiday cards with those pictures for the Whitehall Police Department. So if I can introduce them individually and I'll show you their artwork. First up is Cameron Abbott. Cameron? Applause, please. This is your original drawing, Cameron. Uh, Mr. Lahr, you're in trouble. We have an artist coming up right behind you. So that's your original artwork and this is your framed card. This is the card we made with your artwork. Congratulations. The next artist that we have here today is Ben Wrightmeyer. This is Ben's original artwork. This is the card we made with your artwork. Yours to have. Congratulations. Now, last but certainly not least, from Mother of Mercy Academy, we have Olivia Peckney and she drew this just gorgeous Santa Claus. And we have Rudolph on there too. Congratulations. Be so proud of your hard work. Thank you, Olivia. Congratulations. Be so proud of your hard work. Now, I hate to be this person, but I want to steal the mayor for like two minutes. So I, because when I told these kids that they were going to get a picture with the mayor, they're just mouthed. So if you don't mind, Mayor, if we could go by the Christmas tree?
Yeah, sure.
That'd be great. Folks? Can you picture taken?
If you leave, Mayor, get up. I did omit. We have our cup scat pack with us tonight. Pack one, three twenty-six. Did I get that correct? I've been making a lot of errors the first two minutes.
I promised them they were going to do the pledge of allegiance and I said, no one will start without me. He said, uh-uh, they're going to not do anything. It would be despondent. So, but at any rate, welcome scouts. We were working on an arrow or, uh, arrow blank.
All right, so Christmas card winners, if you want to follow me, we'll get, we'll get this picture. It's all good? Oh, thanks, Hannah. Appreciate it.
I'll take a picture.
We'll move on to our citizens' requests. Any citizen who wishes to speak, please sign out. This is your chance to say something. Okay, one with one, with Bill Marcus?
Hello, I'm here on behalf of the Fairhaven Beneficial Society at Seven Provost Road. We would like to ask for an amendment to Borough Code Section 180.81.4, accessory uses, subsection 180.81.4.1, limited amusement arcades. We're just requesting that private clubs be added to the lists for the limited amusement arcade.
Okay, but Bill, would you give us your full name and address for the records?
William Marcus, I live at 2827 Provost Road.
These are, these are captains of the park. The Fairhaven Club's been there a hundred years, I think. I don't know. But they have their own private nice club. Nobody can, they harm nobody. They're good for the Whitehall. And I suggest, you know how much I complain about these things, if it's for the borough that they have one, I don't blame anybody other than me. But I suggest we allow them to have that chance of smoking. Because things are different than they were years ago, so I'm suggesting that council, please give them the wishes they're looking for.
Look, if I can, if what you're requesting is a change in zoning ordinance, is that what I'm reading? And I apologize, I didn't have it in front of me when you were.
Yeah, I spoke, I spoke with Mr. Delet last week and he printed this out for me and said that there would need to be an amendment.
Right.
If I may, we're allowed to have mechanical devices. Are you asking about P.A. skills?
Skills gaps.
Right, so if you're looking for, again, without, you know, knowing your particular situation or really knowing the details of it, but if you're looking for a change in the zoning amendment, it's a process. You know, it's under the Pennsylvania municipalities planning code. And again, obviously, it's up to the, eventually up to the Borough Council, but the first step is it's got to go to the various planning commissions to determine it. And then really, the ordinance itself has to be in place. So if you have a specific change in mind, typically the process is to write a letter to the planning director, to, we go to the Borough Council about, this is my intention. We would like the ordinance to be amended as follows. And then, you know, then it goes through the application process. If you're seeking as an applicant, you know, for a change in the ordinance, that's one way to go about it. The other way is to write a letter to council, ask the council to consider a change to the ordinance. It's specifically as to what you're asking for, right? Say, you know, what you read, it sounds like what you verbally said now would just be a letter in writing to Borough Council so they can evaluate it because it's, for example, it's not something they can just make a motion on. There's requirements to go to the County Planning Commission, the Whitehall Planning Commission. Then there'd have to be a public hearing for the public to comment on it before council, before they can adopt it. So, I mean, this is, you know, the one way to start would probably be a letter to the council and then they can choose to, you know, kind of take it from there.
I was just going under the direction of Mr. Delet. He told me to come here.
He's not wrong. It's just, it's, you got to start with a letter. Just, it's unclear what you'd be specifically asking for without it.
All right.
Can we direct staff to kind of hold their hands and help them out, try to fast track this? Because they were probably, if I had to imagine, pretty affected by that whole Provost Road construction for the past, over how long? And it's hard for, you know, just a regular citizen to do that.
Right, well, again, I think a letter outlining what they want, you know, to the planning director, that way you'd be able to format it.
How did this work with the 711 on Bradford Road? Because I kind of complained about that a little bit. So they, they actually had to also put a letter in or how, or did that kind of just get?
Not the, not the.
Push out the road.
There was a change, the ordinance. There's a two-step application process. They went through those steps. They went through the zoning process. Once it gets approved through the zoning process, it meets the apartment, then it comes to the police department for approval.
Okay. So do you think there's any way we could fast track this to try to get that before sometime in January?
Well, just, just so you understand, ask yourself, Ross, what has to happen is there has to be a preparation of an ordinance reflecting, and I'm not exactly a hundred percent clear on what the exact request is. That's what I was hoping that letter would reflect, right? Then if council thought it was a good thing, they would then direct the preparation of that ordinance. But that's, that's a council decision at that point. Then what happens is once the ordinance is prepared, it has to go to the Whitehall Planning Commission and the Allegheny County Department of Planning and then you have to review it for, you know, a period of forty-five and then sixty days before you can schedule the public hearing. Then you have the public hearing and at that point, our public hearing, that could actually be adopted. That's the process, right? So, you know, again, I think the first step is to understand exactly what's being requested. Then I think it's, if that's something Borough Council at that time thinks makes sense, then they can direct the planning director to prepare that, you know, work with the solicitor's office, prepare that ordinance and then you just move it forward. But there's, there's statutory timelines that, that govern the process on how it goes. Changes to the zoning ordinance are different than, you know, just our regulatory ordinance, you know, because there's, you know, the rules on.
But we're looking at about sixty days.
Well, from the time the ordinance would be prepared, you'd have to give at least, you have to give sixty days before you adopt the ordinance. So it depends on the time of scheduling the hearing. So it's, it can't be less than that. Right, so by the time you get everything advertised and scheduled.
So I guess what I'm saying is somebody, you think you could reach out to them or something?
Yeah, I think.
They're not a lawyer, so it would be nice if, you know, a lawyer could reach out to them or, you know, help them out, vice versa.
Well, again, it's, I think it ends up, it's a council question if that's something they want, if the borough wants to pursue. But I think a written explanation of what they're looking for, which I think, again, I may have read.
Yeah, I just wanted to, so in the subsections, bowling alleys, convenience stores, grocery stores, high turnover restaurants and low turnover restaurants are listed. They fall under this. I just want to amend that to put private clubs in this section to be covered with everybody else.
Okay, so you, you'll have the process. You can call Ms. Ford if you have any questions.
All right.
Thank you for coming up for your request, for clapping to the Christmas cards.
The reason I, the reason I asked and said what I said was, when the new council comes in, I hope they will accept this for this club that's been around for a very long time. So thank you to you new people.
Okay, um, just land on.
I, I thought there was another citizen on the list.
There is. Jane Caciato, I'd like to defer to the end, please.
I would like to defer to Ms. Caciato since she decided to sign in first.
I'm sorry, Jane. I'm not going to get in for the.
I'm not either. You know what? All I wanted to say was thank you. I am not going to be here in two weeks. I have personal business to attend to, family business to attend to. So I won't be able to say goodbye to you guys. Bob, Phil, and the other guy, Glenn. I'm sorry, Glenn. I had to do it. You guys, everybody that's here right now, including you, Stone, are part of the reason why I never did come up here for thirty-two years. I never really thought I ever had to discharge this board or this, this council. I've always been happy to leave the decision-making for my tax dollars with you guys. I felt like I could trust you. I want to say that coming to these meetings has done nothing but reinforce that trust for the people that are sitting here right now and has diminished the trust to the grievance candidates who have now have seats on this council. But you know what? I got used to the habit of coming up here and I guess coming up here since May has been good because I will be continuing to come up here every chance I get. Thank you. I appreciate your service and I wish you all the best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President. For the past year, I have been attending meetings and I have delegated to empower the responsibility of streaming the meetings to Mr. Mike Weiss over here and we'll, we'll also have other volunteers to assist in the streaming until the streaming is possible in the perhaps relocated council trainers. The reason why we have such a crowd tonight is because I felt it is very, very pertinent to bring to everyone's attention that we went through a three-budget series meetings where we discussed at the very end of it that there would be a property tax hike of perhaps a half mil or a full mil. But most definitely, we had to raise taxes and why did we have to raise taxes? Because the cash reserves were low. Well, at that time, I spent with a list of things that we could have done better over the, the past year, the past two years or so, and I, I have looked at your audits and I have found the adverse opinions thereof. I have also looked at, at the debt service absolutely positively. There was nine point seven million dollars in debt at the close of 2022. But those are not the top reasons as to why we are raising taxes, in my opinion. Reason number one out of the, the budget of the 2024, and if you didn't get a copy, they're sitting over here and I was refused to get a copy. So there was a eight hundred and seventy K for Overlook Park Advanced, over and above. Maybe there's a DCNR grant coming. We'll see. Over, um, five, half a million dollars for our trash contract. That's a big deal. Also, um, there's outstanding four hundred and thirty K for pool construction. Wow, my goodness. I thought the pool was down, but apparently we're going to spend four hundred and thirty K in pool construction over in the next calendar year. I am specifically calling for a public audit meeting in 2023. I appreciate that those figures will not be available until first quarter so that the people can understand exactly why it is that you will put on public display the, the budget and your.
Time is up.
Uh, your, your tax levies. Ten days you have, ten days.
We'll move on then to, that was the last of our citizens' requests. We'll move on to our public hearing of the budget. Um, Mr. Allen? Oh, okay. There was a motion and a second to open up the public hearing on the budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, here we go. This is it. As the residents tighten their bellies during these inflationary times, so does the borough. In preparation of the 2024 budget, staff performed a line-by-line review, examined historical trends and projected upcoming expenses to present in budget that reflects an accurate cost of maintaining services. That's a big capital letter, maintaining services. Approximately a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in cuts and savings were found by the staff. However, the rising costs of doing business negated those savings that were found. Borough Council, excuse me, Borough Council faces an old age dilemma. Either to cut services as a cost-saving measure or raise our taxes to continue to provide the top-notch services that residents have come to expect. Whitehall Borough is historically running a very lean operation compared to neighboring municipalities with less than fifty employees total. Whitehall Borough is proud to offer services on par with larger South Hills communities. After twenty years of, approximately twenty years of no increase in real estate taxes, the consensus of Borough Council is to incrementally raise the million rate a half a mil in '24 and another half a mil in '25 to cover the rising operational costs. Specifically, almost forty percent increase in refugee recycling contracts and public safety expenditures including contractual obligations to Whitehall Police over the next five years. Additionally, the Whitehall Fire Company is looking to replace one of the 2008 aerials to the tune of one point seven million dollars. Unlike neighboring communities looking at one-plus mils increase for '24, Whitehall Borough feels that a phased increase will be easier for homeowners to budget for and to adjust instead of a dramatic increase of the once. Revenues remain stable on all fronts. Increased interest rates continue to see the borough's investments grow exponentially, more than historically budgeted for. However, these higher interest rates cannot be counted on as, as a stable revenue stream as they are subject to larger economic conditions. Staff will continue to monitor rates and maximize the borough's returns as part of their fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers. On the expenditure side, the borough continues to invest upwards of two million dollars into the ground maintaining a stormy sanitary system and infrastructure. The annual road program, once again, will be paid for out of the liquid fuels fund using monies received from the state gas tax. Borough Council continues to provide for the significant support for the fire company and to the Whitehall Public Library, totaling almost eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars between the two organizations. In the twenty-four, uh, 2024 budget, Borough Council will assist in the purchase of a new self-contained breathing apparatuses for the fire department and will set aside monies to continue to fund the day shift programs pending confirmation of adequate workforce compensation for daylight staffer, staffing members and a legal review of the program structure to ensure compliance with Federal Labor Standards Act. We continue to invest in our neighborhood park systems. After initial bid came in, uh, over a million dollars over budget, the Overlook Park Improvement Project is broken down into phases and rebid. Phase one is slated to occur in '24 using the funds from the American Rescue Plan Act and monies from the fund balance. Other capital improvements in queue, including, that include continuation of the Borough Rebutification Plan. New Welcome to Whitehall signs will be purchased to complement the new street signs that were installed in 2023. Public Works and Whitehall Police Department will take delivery of two new vehicles in each department ensuring our fleet maintains the best in South Hills. Additionally, a cover for the new swimming pool will be purchased to save on annual water and sewage costs. This purchase is slated to pay for itself over in a three- and four-year timeline. Borough also continues to work with Connect and Get Solar as we review the proposals for installation of solar panels on borough property. Municipalities are not immune to the rising utility rates of residency in their homes. Solar panels will help hedge against the rising electrical costs in addition to reducing the borough's carbon footprint. The maintenance of the borough's internal infrastructure continues with a new fiber internet as slated to occur early in '24. Additionally, existing multipurpose room will be renovated and repurposed as new council chambers to accommodate larger audiences at public meetings. Monies have been allocated to install streaming capabilities for the new room as well. Whitehall Borough will continue to provide exceptional services that our residents deserve and look forward to as successful.
Thank you. Does anyone on council have any comments?
I do. I have fifty-eight years in this borough. I'm about to leave it. More ways than one. I did many things for this borough, along with the rest of its council. Everything, everything was for the people. All right, do you have a CPA? I'm calling to talk to you. Beth?
You're, you're, you're asking, calling me?
I'm asking you, do you have a CPA? Do you have a CPA? I said yes or no question.
I do not have a CPA. However, I have outsmarted everyone about the budget because how can you, for three years, for three years, have adverse opinions and not have a, a public audit to, to justify that? Why, oh, why? We were, we, over eight, the one point eight million in deficit in 2022.
Because you don't know what the hell you're talking about.
I always expect, uh, over, yes, I know what I'm talking about. I know how to read.
You don't know one thing you're talking about.
I know how to read, sir.
It's a community. It's been twenty-eight years of doing from all of us.
Then great, let's open it up to the people. Let's have a real democracy here.
I think when you.
I'm going to ask both of you, please stop. Phil, 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 please sit down. Phil, please.
My last chance to talk to people.
Democracy is a disaster.
No, I'm not.
At this moment, I think we need to stop and see if there's any other residents that have any, any other residents. Care to make comments on the budget. The only comment I have to make is that from my understanding, the extra money that is for the pool, the four hundred some thousand dollars is already part of the part and parcel of the loan that was put out for that pool and not an additional expense to the taxpayer.
If, if I can explain, the government's fund accounting, if the monies aren't expended in the year that they were budgeted for, you have the option of carrying it over. The four hundred plus some thousand dollars is the last payment to the pool contractor who has not submitted their final paperwork to get paid and they won't. But as an accounting that we have to do the proper way is fund accounting is, okay, we didn't spend that money so that money gets carried over on the balance sheet for that fund and it sits there. It's no more money. It was already accounted for in '23 and paid for in '23 with the six million dollars from the, from the bank for that money. So we're not double counting money. We're not losing any money. It's just money that's left over. It's not any more expense. It was fully expensed last year.
Right. And that was explained in a budget meeting.
Yes.
Because I remember hearing it.
Yes, it was.
Okay, if there's no other comments? Are there any other, any other citizens that wish to speak?
It'll be on display for two weeks, so take a look at it.
I need a motion to put it on display.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing if there's no other comments.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The public meeting is now closed.
I make a motion that we put the 24, 2024 budget on display for two weeks to be voted on at the next council.
Second, it's been moved and seconded to put the budget on display. Any comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Budget passage. Motion to put it on display.
I, I just wanted to thank the staff for their diligence in going through that. That was a painstaking process going line by line and there's, and the chief also, because he participated in that very, I think. His portion of the budget is almost half of the whole budget, so thank you, folks.
Thank you, bud.
Okay, well, now move on to maybe the more ordained, the important item of the budget, Bill and Harry.
Administrator Services, Mr. Nagy.
I don't think you have anything. Bill's, we're doing Bill's. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I did look at that.
Planning and planning, Mr. Bee?
In order.
Public safety, Mr. McCowen?
Yes, in order.
Public works, Mr. Lahr?
In order.
Recreation, Ms. Book? Recreation, Mr. Hook.
In order.
Storm Sewer Fund, Mr. Lark.
That is in order.
Sanitary Sewer Fund, Mr. Lark.
That also is in order.
2022 Construction Fund, Mr. Nagy.
In order.
Liquid Fuels Fund, Mr. Lark.
In order.
And Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, Mr. McCowen.
That's in order.
I would ask for a motion to approve bills and bills to the General Fund totaling From the Storm Sewer Fund totaling $26,937.88. From the Sanitary Sewer Fund totaling $208,575.80. From the 2022 Construction Fund totaling $3,067.50. From the Liquid Fuels Fund totaling $386,346.30. And from the Local Fiscal Recovery Fund totaling $6,300.00.
Still move.
Second? It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions on that bill? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
I would ask for a motion to approve checks and transfers to be ratified from the General Fund totaling $3,000, or, excuse me, $39,264.75. From the Sanitary Sewer Fund totaling $896,882.75. And from the Payroll Fund totaling $1,200,000, $1,200,408.
No, no, no. Let's go back to payroll. There's two payroll dates, sir. $54,000 and then $50,000.
Yes, so the payroll for the payday of November 17th in the amount of $54,669.94. From the payday from December 1st totaling $50,934.74. For a grand total to be ratified, $1,041,752.18.
Still move.
I have a question.
Yes.
It says, under, Sanitary Sewer Fund Checks and Transfers to be ratified, And then, under what Phil just said, the Sanitary Sewer Fund, it only says $208,575.80. Am I, am I missing something? We might have, did we do some sort of project or something that I'm missing?
No, so, under the Sanitary Sewer Fund totaling $280,000 and change, those are bills that have yet to be paid, that you would ask for approval for these things.
Okay.
And then, what, the $896,000 and change, that is a bill that had already been paid to Alex, and you're asking for ratification.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I believe there was a motion and seconded.
Motion and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
I would ask for a motion to approve payroll for the payday of November 17th, 2023 in the amount of $176,490.93.
Still move.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
I would also ask for a motion to approve payroll for the payday of December 1st, 2023 in the amount of $166,532.60.
Still move.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
In our overtime, what's the catch?
Okay, thank you. Approval of the nets, do we need to do these individually? Okay, let's.
I'll make a motion that the minutes from the November 11 budget meeting be your.
Second?
It's removed and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
I would say no if I wasn't there, because I remember Bob did that a couple of meetings.
No.
I could just, I remember.
Yeah, but I believe you still have to vote.
Well, you're okay. You can vote. You can always vote, yes or no on this. So, you have the choice to vote.
But you do have the vote one way or the other.
I mean, I read over.
Your choice to vote. You have the option to vote.
I figure I'm going to leave it the way it was. I, Bob didn't know, whatever, he wasn't there, and I just want to keep things correct.
It's your individual preference. I wasn't here to observe, so I have nothing to compare from my memory to what was written. If you feel the same way, then you can vote no.
Okay, yeah. So, I'm voting no. Thanks.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of November 15th, 2023. Any questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I need a motion for the November.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget meeting for November 18th, 2023. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Yeah, I'm voting no on all of them, just because I wasn't there. Because nothing happened.
No, 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 I understand. You voted yes on the regular meeting.
We have a show more than a six week.
Right, dude, you voted, right, so, it was, yeah, it was on the regular meeting. The actual, but then you voted no on the minutes on the 18th, on the budget.
I think you voted no on all of them. I think the one who wasn't present, I don't know.
Just the two budgets. No, he was present in the, in the, in the council meeting, right? I'm glad to be here. The bud, but the second was the council meeting.
Oh, yeah, I wasn't there. Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I wasn't.
So, being no, yes, no.
No, yes.
That's what budgets hurt.
Yeah.
Okay. And the way that the minutes were.
Yeah, thank you for that.
We'll move on then to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Madam President. First item I have is the monthly reports for November 2023. EMS assists, 175. Court hearings pre-trial, 99. Accidents, 15. Criminal arrests, 20. Traffic stops, 109. Traffic details, 98. And written traffic citations, 89. And written warnings of traffic violations, 103. And those numbers are down from last year. We have the actually higher number of details, but fewer need to stop and fewer need of traffic citations and traffic violations. So, my take on these statistics is that people are obeying the law when they're driving. All right, monies collected and turned over to the borough during November 2023 amounted to $3,412.79. All right, moving along. The radar speed sign located on Brownsville Road near McEnany was damaged as a result of a motor vehicle accident. One of those accidents. The sign was sent to the manufacturer and will be reinstalled once repairs are complete. I assume that the, some insurance will pay for that damage.
Yes, the vehicle was hit.
Whitehall Police Department is once again collecting toys for presents from police. Police officers from all over Western Pennsylvania will be, will deliver the donated toys to Children's Hospital on Monday, December 18th. Residents can bring their donations to the police department by Wednesday, December 13th. I'm going to read this again. Whitehall Police Department is once again collecting toys for presents for police. Police officers from all over Western Pennsylvania will deliver the donated toys to Children's Hospital on Monday, December 18th. Residents can bring their donations to the police station by Wednesday, December 13th. Okay? Skip, I have a, I have a fire report. Will you be planning to read it?
Yeah, I'll be glad to read, Mr. Mayor. I have a copy.
Okay, all right.
I just emailed it to Courtney, so council would have this reference.
Okay.
During the past year, or calendar year begins on December 1st, from December 1st, 2022 through November 30th, 2023, we respond to 536 calls. 25 of the calls were working fires. This was an all-time record in Whitehall Fire Company's 77-year history for that. We trained for hundreds of hours on three Thursdays a month and some weekends for special classes. Some of the training we did was rope rescue class that our crew used to rescue an injured resident off of Bevren Road that fell into hilt. We have set a policy that all our incoming firefighters be firefighter one certified to come off of probation. Firefighter one is a nationally recognized standard. In addition to firefighter one, all our current line officers have achieved firefighter two certification. We had two junior firefighters complete their essentials in firefighting training. They were under the age of 18 when they did that. One has turned 18, and when the other turns 18, they too will begin regular firefighter one training in 2024. We have had line officers recognized for life savings award. And one, Assistant Chief Brian Pearson, achieved life membership status with 20 years of service. Also, William Marcus, one of our line, one of our line officers here, was recognized for life-saving operations himself. Were you able to teach fire prevention classes to over 1,000 kids in our elementary schools and support other community events? Finally, we are grateful to 1,686 borough households and businesses. Out of 6,500, we generously support us with this year's fund drive so far. The total donation amount was $127,939. This was an all-time high. It was up $10,000 from last year. Unfortunately, over $30,000 of this will be used to repair our 10-year-old HVAC system of the new fire hole that was improperly designed and the heat exchangers are now failing. So, we're not getting enough heat now in the firehouse, so we put that money out for that. And finally, to end on a good note, we're always looking for new members to join. Next week, we will accept two more members during the meeting. And I'd also like to thank the borough mayor and council for their cooperation throughout the year. We appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Skip, just one question. Is anybody going to get back with Courtney or about that favor stuff?
Yes.
Okay. Because it's been, what, three weeks?
I heard some will about a week ago, but I know you have elections coming up.
Yes. Okay, so your wings left, about?
Yeah.
Can you get the question?
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair?
No, we've passed a citizen's request.
No, it's a question.
You were giving the report as part of the mayor's report.
Yeah. You can ask me that.
Did you have a question? No, I was just pointing out that.
I have nothing else. Madam President.
Okay, we'll move on then to our engineers' report.
No, solicitor.
Solicitor.
Thank you. I actually don't have a, a request for an executive session for items of lack of litigation. So, I'll ask that again and ask that you adjourn to executive session.
It started with a cuss, guys.
It did. Okay. We're adjourned, we can adjourn, we'll have an executive.
That's true.
Okay. Which means we're not coming back for any votes after the executive session, correct?
Correct.
Okay, we'll move on then to our, we'll probably skip our engineer now, but you'd like to give your report, please.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a report to bring council up to speed on a few items. On page two, the overlooked part, just to make council aware, we did receive a schedule from the prime contractor calendar. demolition work can start as early as next week. So, the project will be moving, keep moving ahead. Under item seven, the pollution reduction plan, Trump, I reported the last meeting, had completed all of the stream restoration work. We did receive their final pay application, did receive their maintenance bond. However, we're still waiting on the real estate, so I would imagine that project will be closed out at the next meeting. Under item 14, that's the pavement maintenance program. Same situation there, we have compiled the closeout documents. Millie and Millie and Son are executing on the maintenance bond and the maintenance letter. I'd expect that project to be closed out in the next year. Under item 16, consent order, just to make council aware, we had a meeting with representatives of the office today yesterday afternoon to review this consent order as well as the flow reduction that we're proposing, the projects that we're proposing. And the purpose of that was to start the grant process that would be due in March of next year. And then, obviously, the submission of that grant would occur in June of next year. So, it seemed very promising that there would be monies available. Also discussing the possibility of applying for grants on projects that we have recently completed. There may be monies available to public.
Yes.
So, some good things there. They did ask about the Spring Valley and Hydro grant that you all received. I believe it was a year and a half or so ago. So, we gave them a status update on that, said it will be something that will be resuming work and coordinating with Mr. Furman on the need to that project. So, it was a very good meeting yesterday. A lot was accomplished. Hopefully, we see some results at the time that the grant applications are done. Under item 17, under Fuel H Drive, we did receive all of the necessary easements to complete that project. It's now time to take action on the bids that were received. We did receive four bids on November 8th. All of the bids received meet the requirements set forth by the bidding documents. The apparent lowest qualified bidder was Soulline Construction Incorporated, and they submitted a bid in the amount of $47,450.00. The recommended motion is to reward Fuel H Drive Storm Sewer Improvement Project to Soulline Construction Incorporated with a total-based bid of $47,450.00.
So, moved and seconded. Are there any questions about that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Please agree with me.
Madam President, that's all I have this evening. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to address.
We'll move on to our manager, Ms. Wood.
Thank you, Madam President.
The president.
I apologize. A lot of housekeeping. But the first item on my report is a job description update. So, as you know, we've been reviewing job descriptions as well as doing a policy procedure review. All of your main job descriptions for both administration and the police department have been completed there before you. So, I would ask that council adopt the updated job descriptions for the following positions. Borough manager, administrative assistant, parks and recreation director, assistant recreation director, camp counselor, water aerobics instructor, public works summer help, chief of police, deputy chief of police, police communications operator, police officer, police secretary, and sergeant.
We have, I thought there was one for assistant manager.
No. No.
Okay, well, we knew that, then, so. You work on one? I'll make a motion that the job descriptions be adopted.
Thank you.
Any questions on the? I just wanted to, when's the last time we did this? It's been a long time.
A lot of the positions were dated 2009. There were some that I couldn't find anything in the fire phone.
Right.
And some were older than 2009.
This is good to have.
It was all in protection for our borough and the employees.
It's good, thank you for all this work and us more.
You're welcome.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to accept the adoption of the updated job descriptions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
I also have a handful of ordinances and resolutions that I will read in some form and ask placed on public display. First, we have a motion to place the 2024 wage and salary ordinance on public display.
Still move.
Check in.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, the ordinance will be placed on public display.
Do I have to move them in some form as I go through or wait until December 20?
Well, you're asking, you're reading them. My understanding is you asked the motion.
To put on public display.
Play, that's the one motion, put on public display. Were you adopted next?
Correct, we'll do that.
Assuming it was a motion adopted, then it would have to be read.
Thank you. Next up, I have, I'd ask for a motion to place the 2024 wage and salary ordinance on public display.
Still move.
Thank you.
Any questions? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Next, I'd ask for a motion to place the 2024 budget resolution on public display.
It's been moved.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded, are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you. The next on my report, you will find attached to my written report, a list of the individuals whose terms on the various boards and commissions are expiring at the end of the year. So, I just would ask if this council would wish that I contact them to see if they would serve another term. You don't need a motion, just instructions, but this council wish.
Can I, is that written somewhere or is it?
It should be. The highlighter that darkened ones are the ones that are expired at the end of December. Would council like for me to reach out and ask if they wish to serve another term?
Excellent.
Yes, please.
You want a motion?
I don't need a motion, I just need an instruction at this time.
All right.
Moving on, you will also see the draft advertisement for the twenty-two-four meeting dates. Typically, in that advertisement, we include the dates for the budget meetings. So, if council elects to follow past practice, those would be November second, ninth, and sixteenth. Additionally, standing meetings for council committees are included in the advertisement. Historically, the library committee and recreation committee have not met outside of the library board meetings and recreation board meetings. We have included them, if council wishes to delete that, please let us know. And I'd also like to note that the first meeting in January will be Tuesday, January second, at seven P. M. in council chambers. If there's no objection to that, we will have that ad run.
Motion, yeah, please.
I don't need a motion.
Oh, okay.
Unless we confirm.
Well, you know, again, I, you were doing that, and that was what you were just instructing, so basically that's a stop, you're like.
That's definitely, we historically have not advertised meetings for the committees, that is new this year, so if there's an objection, we will remove that. But if not, we will run this draft ad that you have before you. Does it make a difference if there's any objection?
No objection to that, just want everyone to be aware that we are now locked into committee meetings at a certain time and date. Where before, we had committee meetings when the committee could get together, so there is a slight change there. And they do not have to meet every month, there are months where they don't.
Next up on my report, I have a copy of the Department of Labor, recently completed a five-year uniform construction code audit. Found that White Hole Borough基础设施ment has satisfactorily complied with the UCC accessibility and administrator regulations on eligible projects from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-two. We have that in our report. And last but not least, Mr. McCallum previously mentioned this at the last meeting, the pension committee had met following up on that. The, excuse me, Macon Hop is recommending raising the inflation slash consumer price index assumption for the twenty-twenty-three actual evaluation from two and a half percent back to two point seven five per year. The CPI inflation assumption affects the valuation directly through the valuation of future automatic cost of living adjustments and indirectly as part of the interest rate and salary increase assumptions. For the twenty-twenty-one assumption, two and a half percent was used, over the past forty years, inflation has averaged approximately two point eight percent annually. And the pension committee recommends accepting this assumption.
So moved.
Any questions? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
And last but not least, the Teamsters two oh five have returned signed copies of the two thousand twenty-four, the two thousand twenty-eight collective bargaining agreement. I ask that council authorize the proper borough officials to sign the contract in the twelve-hour scheduled memorandum of understanding.
So moved. Second, it's been moved and seconded, are there any questions on the council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Over and out.
Okay, we'll move on then to our committee reports. Let's see.
Yep, all right, let's see, we're having here. Okay, Pleasant Hills Chief Henry would like to use the White Hole Police Department's holding cells for the next two years during the structure of their new police facility and mission complex. Chief Agaric requests the council permission to work with Chief Henry and the solicitors in the borough of White Hole and Pleasant Hill to draft in the government to be presented to both councils. Want to highlight?
They basically have to completely tear down just the borders where the police department is. I believe they're going to re-licite to the office part of urban relationships. They won't have a holding facility, they said they average between fifteen and twenty prisoners if they hold for a certain period of time. It's basically until a responsible person can come and pick them up or hit work is prepared to take them to the magistrate or Allegheny County Jail for a week. I've had preliminary discussions with Chief Henry, they're willing to cover any costs that we incur. I'm not looking to make a profit off of this, I'm kind of looking to be a good neighbor. We are on the path for them when they have to go to the Allegheny County Jail. I've talked to our solicitor a few times, Pleasant Hills is willing to take out additional insurance coverage to cover us and them on their costs. So, I think this is a good thing for us, and I don't want to tell them no, because we never know what could happen downstairs and we may have to do the same thing.
Good neighbor, sure.
Hopefully, we can have a, I believe the solicitor said intergovernmental agreement, maybe we can have something in front of you for the next week.
Yeah, we got intergovernmental agreement, then by ordinance, right, so we'd have to add that on the agenda for the next week. Do we need a motion for this now or? No, no, you're not going to put it on anything now, it's, it'll be on the agenda, I think they'll decide. But he can move forward if there's no as of objection.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it need to be a motion to authorize assistance to drop anyone?
Okay, any questions, any other questions about public safety and recreation, Ms. Worth?
Oh, I will defer to Hannah.
Hello, everyone. As many of you know, and you might have saw outside by the Christmas tree, that we are still partnering with the Community Clothing Exchange. We have many generous residents, as well as non-residents, we have a few families that came from Thomas Jefferson Pleasant Hills just to be able to participate in our season of giving, so we've been able to take five truckloads over to the Community Clothing Exchange. The last truckloads went over this week, I did speak with the organizer. She did inform me that over Thanksgiving, there were seven foster placements. With those foster placements, she was able, because of our drive, give every child an entire suitcase of new and used items to go to that foster placement with their social worker. So, we are really happy that we could do that and that they can have new items and not worry about having those items when they're going to a new location. There are collection boxes in the library lobby, the administrative offices, and the police station lobby. If you'd like to refer to page twenty-three in the Borough Magazine for the highest demanded items, socks, underwear, bras, things like that are really needed. Our next partnering event with the library is our play and learn on December eighth, ten thirty in the community room. We are having a surprise guest from the North Pole, if anybody wants to see anyone. So, the kiddos don't know about that, so they're going to be super excited. We are doing a holiday workshop, so they'll get to pretend they're elves and things like that. Our sold-out breakfast with Santa is taking place on December seventeenth, or sixteenth, my apologies, at nine A. M. at Salvator's. This is going to be our biggest crowd year-to-date, and I still have a waiting list of about forty people. So, we're going to have to look into next year, maybe either going bigger, two days, things like that, but it might be a lot for Santa, so we will see. Lastly, winter is here, but I am thinking about summer. Our summer concerts in the park, DJs at the pool, and entertainment for Community Day has been booked and all contracted.
All right.
All right, any questions?
Great job, Hannah, leading her staff duty, wonderful.
Thank you.
Any other questions about recreation? Administrative services, Mr. Vicki.
No report.
Questions? Planning and zoning, Mr. Reese.
I have no report also.
Hey, I'm a bright stone.
No report.
Ooh, public works, that's a lot.
No report.
That's a most in a row.
Well, and I think we're going to add one more. I have no report on parks at this time.
Didn't you quit it?
We'll move on to our, you wouldn't let me. We'll move on to our delegates report, Allegheny County Boroughs Association.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. The ACBA Allegheny County Boroughs Association, we're not going to meet until next week, our quarterly meeting, which was re-elected to a two-year term on the board, which helped, we work with the other communities, eighty-three municipalities and Allegheny County. And one of the things we do, we work in hand with PSAB, Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs. And I've mentioned this before a couple of times, it's so important, the roads, the state roads that run through boroughs need to be maintained and paid for, excuse me, by Pendot, they're trying to have boroughs pay for that, and it's not fair. So, I've gone a step further, and I do have a, I'm trying to make it a bipartisan bill, which will get a lot more leverage up there in Harrisburg. So, I do have a Republican representative that signed on to do this, and they're in the middle of getting a Democrat. So, hopefully, stay tuned, let's save us a little money.
We'll go faster than the.
That's all I have.
Then the radar. Yeah, radar.
That's the mayor.
Go faster.
That's the mayor.
Say we'll go faster. And poor Bill can't die, he's up again.
Sorry, Bill, I'll have to move on to the Chamber of Commerce.
There's really nothing important, they've been doing their year-end, you know, Christmas holiday parties and meetings and so on. But the actual luncheon is tomorrow, the country club start, and it's being served at noon, but we usually get there at one with our information.
Thank you, Murtagh.
Chief Joshua Worth got a new certification, it's CEMS or something like that. I didn't print it on, bring it to my cell at the last minute, but it's a very prestigious president there, certification. And there's only like a hundred and eighty-nine people in the country that are certified to be chief EMS, so kudos to him. Then I guess we could, if any, see if we can work on the next, the next event, that's all.
Well, I have one, I resigned from the board, and I guess it goes into effect January one, but somebody has to pick that up.
That's what we're picking on the screen.
Yeah, and Boggle, thank you. Be careful, I beat you alive over there. That was just me, they're really great people.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. You deserve a map who would say so, you need a lot of work to improve.
Yeah, like seventy, you know, often in a hundred and three.
Jacob, Mr. Reese.
Thank you, Madam President, I do have a report. It's about a forty-five minute report, that's it. First of all, we had our meeting at Bellwood Park, and there was a presentation by the commander of the CERT program. Boy, I tell you what, that CERT program is awesome, I mean, Chief, you can elaborate on it if you'd like to, but it's made up of forty-two members. And we've got two members.
You always maintain a tactical operator in a crisis negotiation, a CERT team, we call it a critical incident response team. Most people know of it as a SWAT team. If there's a critical incident that the patrol officers can't handle, we can contact the CERT team and they can come out and provide additional assistance. They cover twenty-two communities.
Twenty-two, Green Tree is looking to add, so we're looking at, that COG is so powerful. I mean, you know what we've got when we have that COG. An earlier mention was about the contract we signed with Waste Management. Lou Gorsick, who has been in charge of this organization, we cannot let Lou retire. But Lou was anticipating that Waste Management fees, or the contracts on Waste Management, contracts in general, were going to be up about seventy percent. That's what we anticipated, okay, it was through his effort in the COG that that number was at thirty. Now, if you're paying attention, it was that during the news, you know what other municipalities that aren't involved in the COG are paying. There's seventy-three percent increase, okay, so we feel very fortunate with what we've got, and it's belonging to that COG that is made as possible. Back to the CERT program, they purchased tactical vests and radio equipment, and they were able to get that money paid for by Peter Steinshim, Peter Steinshim. And it was money that was confiscated through a drug seizure, so the value of this COG is, I can't emphasize how important it is to us, what they do, so. That's my report.
Okay, I'll see, any questions on Jacob? Okay, we'll move on then to new business.
I have some. You know, it's come to my attention, and my name keeps getting thrown out here on these postings and so forth, and these innuendos, like I have no idea what they're doing or talking about. And then saying that I have improper relationships with these bankers and so forth is just inappropriate and uncalled for. Quite frankly, someone, they need to start focusing as a representative of the people that they would like to represent. And some of these facts too, that Ms. Iker brought up earlier, I'd like to just go through. Couple of them are, the borough was audited annually, and there's no adverse findings have been found. An adverse opinion is the most severe opinion, where normally, if there is any audit findings or issues, it would be called a qualified opinion. And then those issues will be addressed in the management letter to the management, and those issues were likely to be corrected. But there's been no adverse opinions. And then, let's see here, there's a couple of things about the pool and its funding. Residents constantly stake their preference to keep White Hole swimming pool limited to White Hole residents only. The pool is not large enough to accommodate residents without denying access to those White Hole residents. Even if grants had been applied for, there was no guarantee that the borough would have been successful, nor would the grants have been funded the project entirely. Or it would still have been necessary to complete the project. And then there's some complaints about this note for the Doverdale Sanitary Storming and Sanitary Storming Project. In two thousand and seventeen, the note for Doverdale Storming and Sanitary Storming Project was borrowed at two point five six eight percent. In two thousand and twenty-three, the rate was adjusted to two point two percent, a savings of point three percent. So, pavements did not skyrocket between two thousand and twenty and today. Let's see here, none of the documents held is the Borough of White Hole twenty-four proposed budget released by the Borough official. The proposed budget worksheets are publicly available through the right-to-no process, the state dictates that staff must track documents that are sent from the office. No one is exempt from this process, not even council people, because it still requires a level of four to get that information from the Borough. Procedurely, budget hearings are to be advertised in the South Hills Record, and they have been for these prior, the seven days prior to the hearing. The November twenty-third date was twenty-three days in advance. At tonight's meeting, council will be voting on proposing putting the budget on public display for the next fourteen days. And a motion to consider adoption will be held on the twentieth, and that's what we just completed. The raising of taxes was not discussed in the budget series until over two and a half hours through the third budget meeting on the eighteenth. Expenditures must be reviewed before funding plan can be made. So, you can't just say, we've got this revenue, we have to provide the services, we have to find out what those expenditures are, the cost of those services, and then adjust our income to meet those needs for the services, otherwise, we're going to be laying off police officers, we're going to be shutting down the library, and we won't be able to fund the fire department without these tax increases to cover our operating costs. Uh, let's see here, the fire company is being defunded, particularly for duty shift coverage from eight to four P. M. Monday for Friday, forty-two thousand dollars listed as in danger of being denied. No, it's not being denied, it's in the budget, they just have some hoops to jump through relating to the workman's comp insurance and the FMLA, I'm sorry, the federal labor standards. Uh, let's see here, and really what's happening, the monies are budgeted for the daily shift program pending the receipt of adequate workman's comp and firefighters pending legal reviews, so we got that covered. Let's see, pool construction was budgeted, we talked about this earlier, that extra four hundred thousand dollars that was already paid for, it's six million, that's just a carryover because of the calendar year and the way the calendar is done. Uh, let's see, it's stated that the eighteen, November eighteenth meeting, money's not spent in twenty-three, are rolled over to twenty-four, monies represent retains, payment changes, orders, and balances of, for that four hundred and thirty thousand, plus those other monies that have been retained to make sure that everything's in compliance. The overlooked park program, that came in a million dollars over budget, so the budget was to be redesigned and phased out and then rebid. The engineers, I think there was some comment there, that engineers paid a ton of money for this line thing, how many times would you redo that? Play it's about three times, four times?
Just conceptual design and, or it's essentially three times, three times, there we go.
Okay, the deer management program, a form of archery hunting, was funded for the second year for six thousand dollars. This will not be allowed, any money for growth control. See now, we follow a program that's offered by the State Game Commission, they control this, they control the licensing, everything. We could not do a program, whether it be culling or birth control, without the State Game Commission involved. So, that's who dictates the rules and procedures for that. Uh, let's see. The one million dollar question, has any of the work been done with the advocacy and road grant money on high-rise roving or this sort? No, that's under planning and so forth now, right?
The grant money was received last year in two thousand and twenty-two, it's still in design phase. There's a discussion that we have with the solicitor about some work potentially on the private side, but the intention is to bid it in two thousand and twenty-four as the grant has, the money has been spent, and the project has to be constructed for twenty-five, that way.
Okay. Uh, let's see here. Uh, let's see here. Yeah, see, then there's a misunderstanding of where funds are utilized to pay salaries and so forth. So what happens here, folks, is that if a staff person gets doing some project and another project, it depends on the source of those funds or money. So you cannot see their full salary unless you look at their personal detail. Because funding is... Dave King's a good example, right?
Eric.
Eric, my gosh. So Eric does that. So the different jobs that he's done, he's responsible for like the public works and the money coming from the liquid fuels. So those monies are allocated between inner budgets and between the fund balances to cover those salaries that the people work on. Their costs are being allocated through proper revenue sources. Uh, let's see. Yeah, so like the staff is putting budget worksheets together through the whole budget process. You know, there has to be an understanding, and I guess the bottom line here is, I just wish people would be able to work together and utilize the information and educate themselves before they go out there and start making these false accusations and these innuendos, like there's improprieties going on, and there isn't. I'd just like to say though, God does a lot of good things, puts people on the right path and so forth. He's put me on a good path, and I know I have one more meeting, and I'll probably say more at the next, but it's been a privilege and a service. I've enjoyed myself for the twenty-eight years that I've been doing this. And I've lived in this community all of my life for sixty-eight years. So I grew up here, I participated here, played in the parks and pools and everything, and this was my way of giving back. My parents always taught me to give back, and unfortunately, I'm not that active in church, but this chose to be my give back. And so for all the countless hours and efforts that I've put in over the years, I think I deserve a little more consideration from some of these people that are bad-mouthing me in the public. They make it easy, remember.
Sir, if we had...
No, 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 no.
This is the first opinion we're in here for three years.
You are out of order.
Three years.
I'm sorry.
Three years. I was addressed first.
He spoke to her.
It's not citizen's request. Phil, go ahead.
I got a one thing. What move can we do to make sure, before we get out, that somebody makes sure that the bridge down in Wayman gets fixed and up? I mean, this is ridiculous. This is Whitehall Road. You know, ever in a...
Phil, it's not a Whitehall Road.
A county road.
It's a road in Whitehall.
But then, you know, there's a bridge over, and shady side where when the bridge was, it fell down on its own. And then all of a sudden, it was not in a year, and that was about ninety-nine more than this little bridge.
There is a recent update, is it still seems to be on track for the end of the century?
What year?
That could go a week in, where a little bit, if there's another one. There's one misconception about that whole project. It's multi... It was multiple projects. The actual project was the replacement of the bridge. The Columbia gas work had to happen first because there is a gas vein that runs underneath that bridge. They had to relocate it all around, up Wayman, through the woods, by Fairhaven, they all the old stuff. That's what took so long. They ran into numerous problems with the gas line replacement because once they got down to the bottom of Provost for the driveway that goes up to the properties up on the hill, they found out that what they thought was there really wasn't there, and what they needed was twenty feet deeper. And everything was not manageable properly. So they stopped digging with the excavators, they brought out shovels, and they brought in a vacuum truck. And they literally vacuumed out the dirt and the debris from basically your driveway, my hand, all the way out to Fifty One. And they had to do that down to twenty feet. Once they got that relocated, I think the state had a little bit of delay with the bridge being delivered. They removed the old bridge, they had to move a water main first. And as they were moving the old bridge, they realized that there was more slate and rock underneath it than they thought, so they had to bring in additional equipment. The bridge itself should go in quickly because my understanding is it's pretty much prefab, and it's going to show up, and they're just going to slide it in place.
Yeah.
Just in time for Pennsylvania Americans to start next year to more water line replacement.
Oh, that's a great report, the first one I heard. I know when they answered, if anybody asked me that question.
We went over this once before tonight. The utility companies, they don't give us a lot of notice for anything. We might get a week's notice, they're asking for police officers, they're going to close down streets, and then, you know, they say it's four weeks, sometimes it ends up being six weeks. Another example is beginning of this week, Prospect Road, everything was done on Moore Ridge. Out in the blue, somebody shows up and closes Prospect between Moore Ridge and the five-way intersection without telling anybody. Didn't tell us, didn't tell the fire department, didn't tell the school district. They've done that two days in a row, so we went up today and kind of had a little stern discussion with them. They're going to be working until next Tuesday, and now they know who to call, so we can go.
They don't realize you care again.
I don't need to go.
Hey, Chief, I told them to call you because usually we get notified.
Excuse me, Skip. It's not public comment, Doc. That's off.
Sorry, ma'am.
All right. I want to ask, who the engineer, borough engineer, or the chief police? There is survey work going on on Baptist Road, and there's been some speculations with what's going to happen. Does anybody know why the state of Pennsylvania is engaging in so much surveying on Baptist Road?
I'm not aware of their activities.
It's the state... I'm pretty sure it's the state of Pennsylvania.
I hear the rumor that they're actually going to be widening the road.
That's what I... Well, that, I don't know. I heard somebody speculation that that might be what they're doing, so I just thought, you know, we should probably inquire and find out what's going on there.
I think within the last ten to fifteen years, they have also talked about widening the road. For whatever reason, the study, or I don't know if it was input from the borough, they realized that the road is actually not wide enough to add an extra gravel lane to it.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you... The traffic is backed up all the time, and a lot of it has to do with Wayman Road. But if they were able to create a second lane that just went up the hill and then turned right on Brownsville Road, obviously, that would be a benefit to everyone but the homeowners who's property is taken to widen the road. So I, you know, I think that we need to know what is going on so that, you know, we can have some input, make some decisions. And I'm telling you, I think it's... I... The surveyors that I see, they're not utilities, you know, they're state.
We can reach out, I don't know where they'll...
So next project, this is for the end of the month, is going to be Grove Road from Baptist up to Spring Road.
I do have one last thing I need to read for, I think, the eight of us up here. It was an email that I received this week. I know as a result of recent elections, there are going to be new people as members of council. Before this occurs, I wanted to thank all of the members of the current Whitehall Council, the mayor and the staff, for all your hard work and dedication to making Whitehall Borough a great place to live. I have been a resident for thirty-seven years and can say that even though it may take time, all of you have acted to try and solve problems and improve the borough based on what is best for the entire borough and not just a select group of people. You have conducted the business of the borough with the utmost integrity and transparency. It is a credit to all that in order to move the borough forward, you have made the difficult but correct decision to raise the necessary funds when needed, to make sure that we do not move backwards. An organization that does not grow or improve will never succeed in the long run. Thank you again for all you have done for Whitehall Borough and its residents. I would appreciate if this email would be part of the minutes of the borough, minutes of the council meetings held in December. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and it was sent from Gary Brugman. Do I have a motion to...
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Second? Uh, the meeting... Oh, all in favor of returning the meeting? Was that your motion or a motion to put it in the minutes?
I wanted you to put it back in the minutes.
All in favor of...
Technically, you can't just do a motion out of...
Okay.
No. It's part of the minutes record because she read it.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
We don't need all that information.
And I'll make a motion to do a adjourn.
If I can, two things. If I can, Mr. Al. When the minutes are approved next week, right, if they're attached to approval, if it felt like they needed to, if just, for example, if this renovation was not included, you'd have an opportunity at that point to add it, right? It would be nice to even do that. So if you're going to adjourn, as I said, I'd ask the panel to stay in your session for that.
So move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned, we will not come back.